So we call the agenda, the meeting to order, it's August 16th at 6:00 PM. First up on our agenda is interviews for the town historic preservation commission is Matt Powers. Online here? Or in person, okay. Since you're vice chair and you're there in front of them, do you want to?
So I want you to talk a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, well, I'm familiar with the CLG process and the towns that are participating. And this was sort of a dialogue that had occurred many years ago with the resur surveying of the village district. And I'm the executive director of the Woodstock History Center. So we actually assisted the consulting group with that resur surveying and assisted the promotion of preservation. We have a pretty extensive archives of historic resources. And over the last nine years that I've been there, I've been sort of building up our knowledge base and our resources to assist organizations, town, and the division to make use of our resources to help decision making process in whatever capacity that could be. We created a house history program, we've got buildings, and on our website actually built up a historic resource base. And in the discussion about the CLG, obviously, I'm very interested in that because I believe both on the village and town level, there should be somebody who's intimately knowledgeable about those resources and to be able to provide those. So I'll be kind of jumping back and forth. I think I'm well suited for that. I've been in the history field for 22 years. And in that, I've participated in many, many historic preservation projects, adaptive reuse, historic preservation renovation projects. We're currently talking about that at our site with the Dana House, which is built in 1807. So I think I could bring a lot to the table. I'm pretty aware of what the commission's, I guess, responsibilities for. We're not regulatory, I'm not interested in that. But I think with the education pieces and sort of the assisting to grants and getting into that pool of the preservation grant awards that come from the federal government and get channeled through the division, there are definitely things that are in my head that I'm knowledgeable about that I think need attention. Biggest one right here is obviously historic survey structures report for the town hall. And then there's some other associated properties and structures like the Young Street Bridge that need attention. And I think the commission could help that. And we have at the history center Douglas Ross's archive when they did actually completely restore that bridge. And so there's things that I can create access to and I'll create a better knowledge base on.
Any questions?
Do you have any issues attending meetings, whether they are during the day or at night?
No.
Joe, any questions? All right, well, we will. Thank you. You're free to go.
Thank you.
Charlie is? Nope.
No.
Douglas?
He's in the upper.
Okay, then let's move on to.
Mr. Keller?
Mr. Keller, Doug?
Yes, hello.
Go ahead, tell us about yourself.
Well, I'm a town resident. I have an interest in history. I'm a lay historian, you know, I don't have any formal training or job experience in history. But I've lived in town since, well, I moved here in 1981 and lived in some old homes, historical homes. We came here to find the grave sites of some of my ancestors who were some of the original settlers at Woodstock, specifically the Vaughn family. Our family was here in, you know, the late 1700s, moved on to Wyoming when things got tough in the late 1800s. And that's where my mother was from and her family tree extends back to Woodstock. So we, we came here in 81 to look for some of their grave sites and ended up staying here. I got a job at the Woodstock Inn and I worked there for on and off for 17 years. I managed some of the properties for them, Suicide Six, well, Saskadina Six now, I guess it's called, for seven years, the Country Club Fitness Center. I managed a grocery store here in town, Max Market. Currently, I work at the State of Vermont DMV in Springfield. I'm the driving examiner for the DMV down there. And anyway, getting back to history, I love history. I love old homes and properties and old highways and byways that are forgotten about, cellar holes, you know, archaeological sites that, that we might have in town. So I'm interested in helping to preserve that, but also to do it in such a way as not to, you know, preclude modern development and growth of the town for the benefit of all.
All right, thank you very much.
Question of whether you have an issue attending meetings, whether it be in the day, day or night?
No, I can get off work at 4:30, so I can attend meetings in the evening and daytime.
Great, and since Charlie's not here, I guess we can come back to him and move on. On the agenda, so up next is citizen comments. I see, I think I see John Spector on there. Or at least his phone number, Johnny, on?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm John Spector from Woodstock. The Economic Development Commission submitted, approved, and the select board approved in March, a grant for several housing programs, one of which, two of which provided incentives for community members to build either accessory dwelling units or to convert their rental units, short-term rentals, to long-term rentals. We have, and the select board approved the funding of each of those programs. Normally, once the select board approves funding, they don't get involved in the actual spending of that money. The grantees then spend the money, the EDC checks to make sure that the spending is for the purpose granted. But otherwise, the select board doesn't have any further involvement once you approve the funding of a grant. In this particular case, the grantee is the EDC itself. We're the ones that are running the ADU and the rental incentive program. And we have our first applicant that is terrific who wants to build an ADU. The applicant met all of our criteria and the applicant was presented to the full EDC at a public meeting. And the EDC unanimously voted to approve and to give a portion of our funding to this. It was $10,000 and we have budget for $30,000, so we can do three ADUs as a pilot test this year. We've never done it quite this way before. And my question for the select board, Joe and I talked about it briefly, is whether or not you need to approve this. Because it, my view is that you don't, because you've granted, you've already granted the funds for this purpose. The EDC has confirmed that this grant complies with the purpose, that the fund, that the spending complies with the purpose. And so what we would prefer to do is to allow the EDC in our public meetings to approve these applicants without coming for each applicant to the select board. But since this is the first time this has happened, I wanted to come to the select board and ask if you're comfortable with that. If you are terrific, it will speed up the process and perhaps lighten your agenda. But if you're not comfortable with it, of course, we will come with each applicant before you and ask for your approval.
Thank you, John. And as, as I said when we spoke earlier, I think that you're on the right track. And I think because we approved it already by motion and vote, I don't think we need to do again. Ray and Susan, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I agree.
I agree. I think as long as you're within the parameters that were approved, you don't have to come back to us.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement there. And so I move on if there's any other, other citizen. I'm not seeing any on my, on my screen. Is there anyone in the audience? In person? Okay. So next up on the agenda is the municipal officials.
This is John Spector, thank you guys, I'm going to sign off, appreciate it.
This was never about any actual permits or permitting. Select board received a letter about two weeks ago and involving letters from neighbor to neighbor, which would ordinarily be just a neighbor dispute that we would have no stake or role in. Those has brought this like board's attention because like board oversees the various committees and commissions that are part of the town government. And the letter identified the writers of the letter by their positions. And I understand this is a touchy topic, but this, this is the agenda item, so. Ray or Susan, I'd ask you first if you have any opinion or.
I, I think this is a, if all the permits are in place, I think this is a neighbor, a neighbor problem that they have to resolve. It's not up to us if all the permits are in place.
I mean, I, I think the letters were written as in private capacity and not in public capacity. Certainly, if this matter came before any of, either of the commissions that anyone serves on and they didn't recuse themselves, then I think we would have a role, but I don't think we have a role in this.
Okay, and we do have in the packet, the town's conflict of interest policy, which doesn't cover or have any, you know, thing pointed to this type of situation. What I'm hearing, and I think I agree with you, Susan, is, you know, future top, you know, if this comes up at either a planning commission or a conservation commission, the authors of the letters wouldn't be obligated to recuse themselves respectively. But I'm not sure what the select board would do at this time.
Joe, can I, it's Peter Voller's.
Yeah, hi Peter.
See me there, can I chime in?
Yeah, please.
Cause I forwarded the letter to you guys. So Peter Voller's, I'm a Woodstock attorney, living far, far away. But I still practice every day in Woodstock. I, I represent Dan and Meredith Pierce, who are building a home with Chris Ambrose as their, as their general contractor on Rabbit Hill Way off of Route 12. Single-family residents, you know, pretty garden variety thing. I'm sure it's going to be a beautiful home if Chris is building it. They have hired all the normal local contractors to do the work, have received their town zoning permit to construct state wastewater permit. They're just waiting on now for their stormwater discharge permit. And they've received now what I would consider repeated letters from their neighbors. And the only reason why I brought this to your attention was because in the very first letter, the neighbors, Howard Crum and Mary Margaret Sloan introduced themselves in the very first paragraph of the letter as being vice chair of the Woodstock Planning Commission. And, and then Howard is, is a member of the Town Conservation Commission. And I just think, I totally respect that they might have issues with somebody building a home next door. You know, it's not unusual in Woodstock. I just brought it to your attention because I would ask that maybe something could be said about members of these commissions not using their public position as, in my opinion, and as a way to intimidate new people coming into town, hiring all the right contractors, getting all the right permits and just building a home for themselves and their family. You know, we're not talking commercial use here, we're talking for their own personal use. They have a, they have one child who I think is at Deerfield Academy and they plan to, once they fully, once the home is built, they plan to move here eventually and, you know, be members of the, the local, you know, the local community and contribute to the local community as they are ready. So that's the reason why. We also noticed that in other later letters that they're copying the town of Woodstock on that. So we wanted to make sure that we gave you our side of the story here and let you guys know that, you know, there's, there's no small amount of attention going into this. This is not some sort of rogue building project, clear cutting, things like that. They've cut enough trees just to build their home and they create the, you know, a nice yard around the home, just as any, any of us have done and, and still do in Woodstock. So that's the only reason why I brought it to your attention. And I totally understand that, you know, that it's not in their official capacity, but still, it's definitely meant in the later letters are copying into Riverside of Queche Planning Commission and all these different things. When there was adequate opportunities, you guys know, to object to these things during the permitting process. So we just felt that it is something you should know about, that you do have members of your commissions who are, in my opinion, using their public position for their own personal reasons. And I don't think that's a correct thing to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter. And thank you for the previous story.
Mary Margaret Sloan is asking to respond.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mary Margaret.
So I hope you'll forgive me, I have written comments. I wanted to make sure that I said everything that I wanted to say. So you have our detailed written response to the Pierce's false claims. However, just yesterday, we found out that they have violated our town regulations. They began work more than three weeks before they were legally allowed to. Their permit is dated June 6th.
I, I just wanted to.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Cause this is really just not our purview. This is in the zoning office or the state office. And we don't get involved in zoning matters, so.
This is the permit that was issued by this town.
I know, but that does, it wasn't issued by the select board and we're not an appellate body to zoning at all. So it's just really not something we should be hearing.
Okay, all right. Well, then let me continue to address the other issue. The, the permit violation, I'll take up with Stephen?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. So we all know what's going on with this letter. The Pierce's are trying to distract everyone from the environmental impacts of their actions and them breaking the law. The illegally clear cut?
Mary Margaret.
Okay, I'll jump to it, I'll jump to it.
Yeah, we just really don't want to hear the merits of, of the dispute. It's just not really, and I, and I, you know, I know, I know another neighbor is here as well and I know it's a really sensitive.
It's a very sensitive issue.
But it's just not something we can get involved in.
Yep, okay. To specifically address their allegations.
But we're not even, I mean, we're, we're not listening to their allegations either.
But Mr. Voller just listed them and I deserve an opportunity to respond to that.
Okay, he'll just respond to what he said.
Just respond to what he said.
That would be great.
Howard and I have done nothing wrong. There's no conflict of interest. Under the policy, because the Pierce's property, and I'm saying what you've said, but please hear me out. Because the Pierce's property won't be coming before either of the committees we serve on, a conflict of interest is simply not possible. We didn't abuse any power because we have none in this case. The only ones who have power are the Pierce's themselves, the state of Vermont, and you, the town of Woodstock. And we in fact begged the Pierce's to act responsibly, but we have no power. We're not against thoughtful development, we're just against indiscriminate destruction of Woodstock's environmental and scenic resources. Gilbert's Hill is not only our home, but it's also a national treasure, contributing to Woodstock's economy for nearly 100 years. It's on the National Historic Register and it's protected by easements from the Vermont Land Trust, the Preservation Trust of Vermont, and the Green Mountain Club. No one can ever develop our land and it's open for public recreation. Hundreds of donors, including probably folks in this room.
Joe, if I can interrupt, can I object?
We're going to let her speak and then that's going to be the end of it because we have.
We have no power either.
No power in this, so we'll listen to what she has to say, then that's going to be it for this.
Right, right, can you, if you, can I just chime in for a minute? I'm having trouble hearing, so I'm just going to ask that you share the rest of her statement. Cause I can't hear what's being said.
So hundreds of donors, including folks in this room, probably came together to protect the history and the scenery of this landmark. And it's why we are so passionate about protecting the Prosper Valley and why we join the planning and conservation commissions. We shouldn't be made to be afraid to speak up because a new neighbor tries to defame us personally and publicly. And I'm happy to, I have copies of my statement.
Is that what was emailed?
Nope, this is what I've said tonight.
Great.
But again, we have.
I understand.
We can't do anything about this.
But that's what was raised, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, additions.
additions and deletions, Joe?
I'm, I'm satisfied with where we are so far. If there's nothing else that Ray or Susan has. Okay, are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda? The only one I have is the additional executive session topic. And Ray or Susan, do they have anything, or Tom? All right. So we'll add an executive, one of the, an additional executive session to the two already that we have. And that brings us to the manager's report, Tom. Tom?
Okay, some of these things I think the board may already know, but I'm just going to kind of repeat myself. Nothing else for informing the public about things that are happening in the town or the town hall. We have a new hire. It is a part-time planning and zoning administrator. This person will work approximately 25 hours a week. And will do other things at the town hall such as assist in the manager's office when people are absent. And there'll be some cross-training between this person and other current employees in the town hall so that we can just have some flexibility when people are out. A number of people have asked about the Village Green Historic Sign. This is a cast iron sign, it's in the center of the Village Green. It's property of the Vermont Division of Historic Preservation. The division routinely removes these signs and refurbishes them, and that's what happened to the sign. It's expected to be returned, I'm going to say with about 30 days now. My reports are 45, but this was written some time ago.
Tom, can I interrupt for a minute? I'm having trouble hearing you. Are the mics on the thing, are they, where are they? Yeah, see if, see if that helps.
Is that any better, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, loud and clear.
Okay.
We have some other mics.
Joe, Wendy Siple, who is also a neighbor of the Sloan-Crumm household, has also asked to leave a written document with us.
So leave with or just read?
No, just leave it with us.
I'm happy to read it, but I understand that you guys are a part of it.
I don't want to reopen that.
No, so we, yeah, she's just going to leave it.
So continues, Tom, thank you, Peter.
All right, third item on my report is the municipal management replacement process has begun. A recruiter has been hired and this recruiter will organize and pretty much lead the search along with the trustees and the select board. We have had a key personnel resignation. The Director of Public Works has resigned effective September 2nd. It's going to be a big loss for the town of Woodstock. He was doing a great job, but he had, he has an opportunity that he really can't turn down. We were already began advertising for a replacement. The resumes are due August 26th. So if anybody wants to have, has any leads for us, someone that is qualified to do this job, please contact me. We did receive some first amendment training. And that happened on August 8th. We are looking at additional security measures in the town. We do have a quote for security cameras around the town hall. And we're looking for funding to pay for that. That might be something that comes back to the board if we don't find the funding to, see if the boards and the trustees will, will fund us. I think they're pretty much needed things. We've sent out various routine requests for bids that normally go out, for example, bids for winter sand, gravel, and diesel fuel have been issued. There is an infiltration issue in the sewer line crossing Kendrick Brook just downstream from the bridge on Central Street. I think that's going to be repaired this week by a subcontractor that actually is going to line that sewer line as it exists today, so there's no disturbance. But there will certainly be some equipment operating there and a little bit of commotion. And then I just wanted to provide some information that the listers produced. And it shows that since 2020, we're seeing an upward trend in the growth of the grand list. It's not outrageous amount of growth, but on average, 2% per year for each year. So that's kind of good news. Any question?
All right, I've got none. Which I think brings us to liquor, the liquor license application for the brasserie. Everything looked order, in order to me. I would entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
We appoint Ruth the brasserie.
Okay, motion by Susan, second by Ray, a call for vote, all in favor? Hi. I didn't hear Susan, but.
I said I, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. And that brings us to new business, so first item on new business as Tom was just talking about, real quick, we have to adjust the, or set the FY23 tax rate. And if I remember correctly, I think there's a proposed on the wrong page here, hold on. I'm on the wrong page here, hold on. There we go. As it's 0.5851 for the total town and is that what we're looking at here, Tom? Are we looking at the, actually probably the total town with police of .6549? I can't remember last year if we did, how we did, if it was the town and town police separate or we did the total with police.
I don't see any reason why you want to separate it out. So I think it's .6549, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there any discussion or do we, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the tax rate for 2023.
Second.
I believe that Ray made a motion.
I seconded it.
Okay. And as long as Nikki is able to have it for the notes, for the minutes. I wasn't able to catch the whole motion. But my guess is it was to the gist of accepting the town tax rate as proposed.
Yes.
Okay. A call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? Motion carries. And the other new business item for tonight is the update for the authorized representative. This is for the loan documents for the South Woodstock wastewater treatment facility refurbishment project. I don't think we need a motion. I think we just need to sign this if Nikki descended around his ducky sign. What's, Ray and Susan, what's your opinion on that?
We probably should just move to authorize Tom anyway, just to be. Yep.
So they know Bill Curbin's no longer here, but they don't know Waylon's not here anymore.
Yeah.
So then I'd be, I'd call for a motion to update the contact information to Mr. General as, as presented in the packet.
Ray was also commenting that we probably need to let them know that Waylon's not the appropriate signatory either.
Right.
Now.
They sent it to the right email address, wrong person. And soon that won't be Elijah anymore, so. At least they have the right email address. But yeah, if we could just let them know that the staff down there is changing. Hey, Zoe.
Yeah, I did let them know that Waylon is no longer here. And I will say, I believe that I was the authorized official for the ESB because I do all the requisitions and I request all the money. So it was both Bill and myself. I don't know if that means anything for this time. But just letting you know.
I think your name still appears on the document, Zoe. It's just that they want to replace Bill Curbin. Because they know he's not here.
So I would move that we authorize or that we approve the signing of the appointment of alternate authorized representative.
I'll second it.
Motion by Susan, second by Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That's it for new business for tonight. Is there any other business to come before the board before we move on? Seeing, seeing nothing. Can we, let's see. I think we're ready to move into executive session, which is going to be under 1 VSA 313. Let's see. One three. And let's see, what are the other? Both of those are, and E, 1E. Is there a motion?
I move we go into executive session.
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion by Susan, second by Ray to move into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, right. Now that we're back, the first items up for, that are ready for motions are Mr. Powers and Mr. Kelleher's applications for the Historic Preservation Committee.
I move we appoint Matthew Powers and Douglas Kelleher to the Town Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second it.
Motion by Susan, second by Ray. All in favor, appoint Mr. Powers and Mr. Kelleher.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that motion carries. That brings us to the Town Manager Search Committee.
I make a motion to point Susan for the Town Manager Search Committee.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And it sounds, and I'll make a motion that Ray Bujwa be appointed to the Town Manager Search Committee.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor? All right, okay. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, and then I guess we will come back to appoint our citizen person.
Might just have a special meeting or something there. And then the last thing is the.
I'll make a motion to approve the general release.
Second.
All right, motion by Ray, second by Susan. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries.
Point of order, I wonder if you want to consider, I guess you don't want to say your names yet until we.
No.
Yeah, forgot that.
Right.
All right, and that just leaves approval of the minutes.
I was not here for the July 19th meeting, so I don't think I can vote, which means we don't really have a quorum to approve those minutes.
Okay, why don't we just bring, push these off to the next meeting? We'll do all the minutes at once at the next meeting.
That's good for me.
Great.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, have a good night, you guys.
Thank you.
Aye.